Black cat.
Okay. I'd like to call the library trustees to order at six thirty-eight. And we'll be much and then we'll do. Nations to the divide of the United States of America. And to the public, which is stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. And no call. President Jonathan Schultz here, Vice President Eric Schott.
President.
Grant News, Wemba, who's been here. Secretary Karen Francis is absent, trustee Becky Knapp present, William Lonsky.
Ellen.
Director Equo Stevenson and Assistant Director Amy Rosen are also in attendance.
Okay. Can I have someone approve the agenda?
Right to for the agenda.
I'm a second then.
On favor?
Aye, aye.
Before you're supposed to. Emily, are you in as public comment or are you here as presenting?
I can't.
Okay, that's what I figured. All right, well, since we have no public, Emily will be next presenting the reading and live witnesses.
Hello.
Hello, Emily.
So first, let's look in here. I did not get very charged, let's. All right, so first up is our summer reading wrap up for two thousand and twenty-five, which was colored art world themed. So the challenge was the collaborative summer library programs theme that they pick every year for nationwide. They provide art or they provide graphics and programming ideas stuff for us, which was color our world. Celebrating art creativity and imagination. So this year's the first summer that we have split the children's program into smaller age groupings. Historically, it's been babies through kindergarten, first through fifth. So this year we split it to babies through preschool, kindergarten through second and third through fifth for those youngers. They kind of split up how much they had to read or were were challenged to read this summer and help some of those younger kiddos. So we had six different challenges, those pre-kids, teens, sixth through twelve adults and staff. This stats. So two thousand and twenty-two through two thousand and twenty-five. We did go down with the number of readers that we had this year, but they did read more than they did in the last few years. So like a little under a hundred less readers, but they read about twenty thousand more minutes. And that's not including books, which babies through kindergarten are tracking outside of minutes. So a little bit lower, but more reading, so that's good too.
Well, we only had what seventeen less readers?
We had seven hundred and eight.
Okay, I'm looking at twenty twenty-two, yeah, so almost a hundred ninety.
Okay, two, two, two less than two thousand and twenty-three, but a little less than last year.
Okay.
It's just the eighth breakdown, though it's still split babies through kindergarten and the like first through fifth, just because my stats from last year, I can't split. How we've done it now. But we had one more adult reader this year than last year, little less teens, couple more kids, less babies through kindergarten, but a lot of our kiddos have jumped up into like the first grade age. And then same number of staff as last year was sixteen. So a little bit of fluctuation, but still pretty good. A lot of our teens have graduated that were doing it, so they're adults now. And our kiddos are getting older. And the general breakdown of school, our most participating schools Dublin Elementary at eighty-one, followed by Lakewood at sixty-seven. For middle schools, Clifford Smart is the highest with twenty-three, and then our high schools are a little split. Lakeland's above highest and we have a couple of Walleye kids. We also have a hundred and twenty-six kids that just marked other because they go to schools that aren't listed in our system yet. So next year we're gonna work on crowdsourcing their information as they come in, so we can get a better idea of what schools we are actually surfacing. And then we have a lot of homeschool friends come around too. As a general age breakdown, Beanstack does do half ages up until twelve and a half, so it does look a little clunky. Our best ages are seven through nine. There are about forty-five, forty-two and forty-four participants for those ages, which is about first. First, second, third, little into fourth grade kiddos that are doing it. Still a good amount of like older kids, though. Woo. It's like nine or ten, but for teens with seventeen, fourteen-year-olds, so we're kidding them. They're come. And then this is just weekly stats. I made sure I tracked how many readers were actually participating this year every single week through summer reading, just so we could see. When kind of the bulk of people were joining the summer reading challenge, it's not really happening that first week, but kids are still in school when summer reading starts. So about that third, fourth week is when we got the best jump, but we were still dating active readers every single week through summer reading this year, which was. And then looking forward, which is the best part, super exciting, two thousand and twenty-six is dinosaur themed.
Whoa.
Dinosaur's archaeology and paleontology, the theme is on Earth, a story. We already have a very popular dinosaur picture book writer booked for summer for next year. Her name is Lisa Wheeler. She does like the dino sports and dino holiday books, which kids really love. And she's local, so have her already on the books to come in. And kids love when we do dino reversal, we're especially jazzed for dinos. This is the general art that they have put out so far. They only have given us these four images, but the shop opens up in October, so we'll be able to see more of the graphics that are coming through. But they're very cute. They have this little blue, this little blue guy here, he's like the mascot of of the theme for next year, so we hopefully we can put him in a bottle. Two thousand and twenty-seven is mystery detective and suspense themed, so mysteries await at your library. Two thousand and twenty-eight is mythical creatures, libraries are legendary. And then they just voted for two thousand and twenty-nine for the theme is nature. We don't have a slogan yet, but nature is very proud of the digital happens. And that's about complete. Thank you for supporting summer reading.
Well, thank you.
Any questions about fans?
No.
I don't have any questions. I think one of the things I'm thinking about for next year is a large adding a large kickoff party like we do. I know we do the ending party.
It's in my next presentation.
And then something that we kind of dabbled with it, no by when or sometimes our numbers will go down, it's not unusual to fluctuation. Or see more reading, that's kind of what happens sometimes. But we tried a mid-year, a mid, mid-summer, like a mid-summer meeting, like. Party and that was actually kind of like during COVID, so it was really happy to do, we did like a drive-by, like they got gave little bags and something like that. But just some ideas and some thoughts on potentially how to just keep, keep them calm.
Yeah, those are good ideas.
So.
I'm ashamed to say I did not participate this year. And I think we, I think we should challenge ourselves next year to all this.
I grabbed me like the bag I got.
Wow, show that again.
If you have suggested.
That's really nice.
This is for next year. Delta the hardest.
Oh, I was super pleased by this. I made sure I tracked my hours probably better than I tracked my kids' hours, but I got my bag. But.
That, that bag's nice. You could do that again.
To do it again, you have.
Yeah. Yeah, he's gonna do those again. That's very nice.
I, that was the whole weeknight, did the program this year.
The bags are good. Moving into my next one. So interesting library mascots.
Yay.
The building committee has heard a little bit about them and seen them a little bit, but this has been my rabbit hole dive for the year that I'm super jazzed about. We are looking to create mascots to help with a lot of things. They're visually memorable for kids. They can be literacy ambassadors at events we go to, social emotional bridges, making it a warm and comfortable space for kiddos. Integrating them into events, programs and marketing, which is best, great fighting part. I researched a couple of other libraries locally who have mascots and have talked to them about how they do their stuff. And they, they're all over their social media and marketing and it really, it helps draw kids in, so I'm very excited. Our potential youth mascot, her name is Fable. She's a red fox. She's curious and imaginative and playful, and she loves going on adventures and discovering new things. She's very cute. This is just a general graphic, it's not what it looks like. And then our teen mascot, his name is Folklore, is the white to the fear. He's wise and calm and thoughtful and he loves storytelling and helping others. They have very cute little backstory stories. I won't go into it right now, but I've spent a lot of time on them. Part of their backstory is that they are both rooted in the White Lake area, so there's their backstories when we watch them. Have connections with Highland State and Indian Springs Metro Park, and they're both libraries that you can see, or both animals that you can see in White Lake and even sometimes outside the library. I've seen that in the theater. But we are working with a local illustrator, her name is Amy Neelander. We've had her out a couple of times to do parent drawing channel workshops. I believe she lives in Royal Oak, but she's a very good illustrator. I love her style. When she was out this summer to do a program, we spoke to her about doing the mascots, helping us out. So she is gonna help create bring our friends to life. They're both gonna be friendly and cute and cartoonish and kind of human-esque. The images will be adaptable for social media and signage and print, and the eventual goal is to create paper poses and seasonal outfits so that we can use them throughout the year for other fun stuff.
So we might use them too for like, if the kids want a T-shirt.
That's one of my other rabbit hole ideas.
Because that's what I was thinking immediately was the kids with the White Lake Library T-shirt and the little, and the little fox and.
I hope you have your.
Okay, great, great.
So some of the uses, they can be integrated into our existing reading challenges, so depending on when they're ready. Amy had some busy stuff going on for September, so she is getting back with me at the end of this month, early October, to like actually start the process. If they're ready by winter, the plan is for the winter reading, they go to be themed around them as like a launch into them. But other reading challenges, we can like the books before challenges, we can read theme around them for the kiddos. Storytimes, early literacy promotions, like book before challenges, or potential newborn kids, which is another rabbit hole. And then seasonal events like scavenger hunts, we do quite often in the youth department, they're very popular. Book displays can be used around that, easy. And then creating like coloring pages, stickers, buttons, bookmarks, the digital content, maybe a storybook, who knows, have a lot of ideas. A lot of fun stuff for the kids to get excited about them and just integrate them very easily. Couple branded idea programming, don't have to go super into detail here, but like Fables Forest Storytime, the Fox Cub Camp, which could be like our stuffed animal sleepover, which is pretty popular. Folklore's Trail Tales, general reading trails, wildlife programs, trivia nights, the stuffed animal camp in. Mailboxes, letters, all sorts of cute stuff that can be themed specifically for deers or foxes or forest, fun stuff. The general timeline, we're working with the illustrator right now. It's about two hundred dollars to create the image for both of them. We're working on potentially two poses for each of them, so it's pretty reasonable price-wise. Once those are done, we'll start working on the promotional materials. We'll launch them like that either winter reading bingo or potentially a summer reading kickoff party. If they're not done before bingo starts, we'll hold off on them and probably do a summer reading launch party. Also mascot kickoff, meet our friends. I have branded programming in house use. There is a potential idea for an adult mascot if they're cool and everyone likes them. I do have thoughts about a third friend. He's not fully launched. Yes, it's a little big ideas, creating a storybook about their adventures at the library. I've seen a couple of other libraries. Big San Diego ones that have created picture books and given out to kiddos. Which is big idea, potentially like murals in the kids' department. The reading challenges, mascot costumes to wear to the schools, which me and Amy will gladly dress up as both of. Branded merchandise to use as giveaways or for sale, if we have a like an online sale shop, which we've been talking about too. And then we could use them for fundraising ideas to like fun runs or read-a-thons, adopt a mascot events, sell coloring books for cameras, anything branded.
We could also do like a contest for the kids, writing their own books using the mascots.
This is general inspiration for them. This is not exactly what they are going to look like, because this is AI-generated. But Amy is working on using her own style. They will be branded color-wise. We're gonna work on creating some little like patches or pins for his vest that follow like the library's logo, like the street sign, the little blue and white library street sign. To be cute there, those generally kind of.
That's like our library logo.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
So his little patches and pins will be like the book first logo, the little like blue and white street sign, and then we've talked about a couple other things, I think just like a Michigan one, we've talked about to keep it kind of simple.
You could have one that represents the building. Like a stylized version of the building.
That's what I'm looking. For consumed, oh, that's the end of this one. Surprise. Yay.
Very nice.
Yeah, I was wanting to get a quote back from her. She was busy. She had some Eastern Market stuff going on through September, but. She knows that the place potentially would turn reading bingo, so hopefully by the end of the year, it will.
Okay, I think it sounds great.
I have a question. Do you think that in the future that this is something that you would replace up on the shelf? And mention a bench, would you just use these friends?
As the person who helps the elf every year. He's a demanding friend. He might come to vacation. But yeah, oh yeah, that is the other idea. There's this company called Buzzies, which a lot of kids use. You can like submit your own art and they'll create a stuffed animal version of your kid's art. Kim of the library had them make their custom mascot as a stuffed animal, so that is the second step after we get the artist to create like a stuffed animal that just have in the building, so kids can see them on top of the content. And that's like a hundred dollars for like the custom stuffed animal, so still not overly outrageous, but that is the secondary effort.
Fabulous.
Thanks.
Thank you. Good job, Emily.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
All right. So moving on, next is approval of minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the White Lake Library Board of Trustees of Wednesday, August twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five.
I will second that.
Favor?
Aye.
Your yes votes? We're at other recits already. There's this report, my daughter lived through the first earthquake. I'm in California and with no problem. She's in a brand new building, she thought was a sway. They was on the east floor. So that was quite a text to open up that morning. But she's fine. That would be my, my gratitude report for the week.
Okay.
So Eric, did you have anything?
I do not have a report.
Secretary would be Carrie. She's not feeling well, so we say good months for Carrie, it's gonna be better. And then Gwen.
Okay, um. Do we have the finance report? I don't have a copy in my folder. Uh, because I want to talk about the CDs.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks very much. Now give that back to us. Um. I don't know if anybody looked through our finances, but we're doing very well. You know, in accordance with what our budget is, and I, I see anything out of the ordinary. If anybody else has any comment. You know, let me know. And then we've got, we've got a couple CDs that are coming due in November that I want to discuss as well. Okay, so if there's no comments about the current budget. I am going to make a motion to accept the August bills for payment as presented.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next for you, yes, please.
And the next order of business is in July, I mean, I'm sorry, in November, we have. Two CDs that are coming due. And. Hmm. The Chase one is due November twelfth. Um, and that's currently for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And so we're going to. I thought we had on here what we were gonna.
It wasn't on there, it was a separate, it's on the CD projections.
That's what I was thinking. No, you know what? I'll read it off my phone. I'll just read it off my phone. I'm sorry, I thought, I thought it was on the sheet paper. Bear with me, because we, the finance committee made a decision on what we wanted to do for. For the CDs in November, one of them is the Chase. We'll talk about that first. It's November twelfth, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And we are, we anticipate just rolling that over. It's currently a twelve-month CD, and that's normally what we do. And but we're going, I'm gonna recommend that we do whatever is the. All right, I guess I need, I can need the sheet. Uh, yeah, because I can't find it. I apologize. I want to make sure that I have exactly what the, what the.
Isn't that point five or her, she said a hundred and twenty-nine thousand nine.
Well, that's probably what.
That's a bit. Yeah.
It, well, it does, but that's not what's on here, so. That's why I thought I need to look at this again. So we're gonna, we continually roll that over. Last year we put, it was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is what we used to put in it all the time, and we pulled out a hundred thousand dollars and opened a Vibe Credit Union account. We have to keep a hundred thousand dollars in the Chase account to ensure that, one, if we had any problems with Flagstar, we'd be able to pay bills. And we have a checking account at, at Chase, and we've tested everything, so, you know, ACH and everything else. And, and positive pay, so we know we could go forward if we needed to. Also, if by keeping a hundred thousand dollars in our government entity bank account at Chase, we don't have to pay any fees. So that's why we continue to maintain that for, you know, for security reasons and also. It, you know, to be able to pay bills if we absolutely need to. So we're gonna, so the anticipation is that we're gonna roll over this hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars plus the interest. And I thought we were going to roll it over for twelve months again. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Um. Hmm. But this is one of my questions, because. Were we, were we looking at only doing a five-month? Okay, so. All right. I'm ready to make a motion, so it's a hundred and twenty, is that a hundred and twenty-nine-nine? Is that what's all the interest is in it as well? All right, thank you very much. Because Joe's report just shows the hundred and twenty-five and it doesn't show. All right, so thank you. Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to roll over the entire amount of the Chase CD maturing on eleven, twelve, twenty-five, approximately a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars. For three to nine months, depending on the interest rates that are offered by Chase in November.
I'll second that.
On favor?
Aye. Aye. And I apologize for not having this in front of me. I should have printed it. Um, and then we have one for Genesis that is due, and that was a seven-month CD. So again, I am going to make a motion to reinvest that money of a hundred and forty thousand. Well, right now it's a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. I'm going to make a motion that we invest a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Of the Genesis CD that's maturing on eleven twenty-two, the total's gonna be a hundred and forty-seven thousand and nine, approximately nine hundred and sixty-one dollars. For seven to thirteen months, depending on interest rates into another Genesis CD. So it'll only be a hundred and forty thousand. The interest will be deposited into the Flagstar checking account.
I'll second that one.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that's the end of the treasures report. Thank you very much.
We got, he said.
That way to Becky. Thank you.
April, who was down to the director's report?
Yeah, you want to hand it over?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, director's report. So some things we did this month, we created a new library card brochure. So we're happy to put that, it's still packed full of information to help with everything our patrons need to know when they get a new library card. Heather is attending the White Lake Citizens Academy and learning a lot about what our township does here. And the additional ID lab counter space and cabinets have been installed, so to use have a moment if we leave tonight. Circulation services, excuse me. We have some staff members who are volunteering for our service committee. They're afraid to lose this year, and we're excited to see what they have planned, get what, what they plan. Thank you to Kathy and Heather for representing the library at the fire department's open house. And our circ services staff are always also doing professional education, and this time. Cam attended the Nish Academy Customer Service Module on handling and handling the result. Luckily, we don't have too many emails. Communications and marketing are going pretty well, stats are going well there. It's got some good Google reviews this time, two five stars, very good library, friendly staff, large and welcoming. White Lake Library is my favorite place. The libraries are awesome, so that's real great. Our Daughters of the American Revolution not only did a display case, but they were nice enough to add. Some informational, educational displays that were age-appropriate in the different areas around the library, so we thank them for that. Director connections, it's been a busy, busy month, sending lots of meetings. As well as outreach, this farm festival, State of the Lakes, also thank you to William and Gwen for sending that with me. And a couple of coffees and the. Highland White Lake Business Association Annual Membership Meeting, where I was elected as one of their directors at large, one of six around the community.
Very nice, very nice.
To connecting with them. Tended a TOLN shared automation system meeting and many, many website meetings that is going well. And workshop, I attended two workshops on effective communication in the digital age. Those are very interesting. Our friends have made a new honor box and David installed it. If you haven't had a chance to see that, it's much, much better. And along with that, they, well, actually, I don't want to get shocked, get ahead of myself, so. Part of the Friends last year's contribution list was since we installed. Two new baby changing stations, one in the men's and one in the women's, so that. You didn't just have to use the family bathroom if you wanted to change your baby. Now you don't have to. So dads or uncles or whomever can use the dad and, you know, moms and whoever, they've got the ladies, and so that is all set. So big thank you to David for getting those installed. Friends, so again, so not only do they have that new honor box, but they do have a QR code where you can now pay for your purchases via Apple Pay, credit card, Venmo. Et cetera. So great news for them. We're very excited to have that there. They had their evening with a Christmas recap, very funny show. I was there, just really fun time. They had fifty-two tickets that were sold. Resulting in a seven hundred and eighty-dollar income, and after expenses, they received nearly a three hundred dollar profit, so. Big thank you to them for going that extra mile and doing that extra programming. You are all invited, as you know, to Friends Annual Meeting, which is on Tuesday, October fourteenth at six thirty. They're gonna review their bylaws, they'll have their election, annual election of officers, and they will present that large check. For their financial commitment for us for this two thousand and twenty-five year.
Right, I, I represented us last year. I'm certainly hoping, I know I will be out of town, so I'm certainly hoping somebody will. Make the effort to go.
I just wrote it down, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Jen, because it really is a nice meeting, and it's great for the board to be there to accept that, Jen.
Also, some quotes about the September book sale. The first day, my phone was, the friends were blowing up my phone, which is great. Quote, this morning, the line of people waiting to enter the library was clear down the sidewalk. They have never seen a crowd that big. They've got compliments about the library and the sale. And the friends earned over fifty-six hundred dollars. And the friends earned over $5,600 at that book sale, so we're very excited.
Nice.
Okay. Information Services staff has been out and about, they attended Lakeland High School parade one night and have made some contacts with the PTSA group there. Maria, Stephanie, Faith and Emily also volunteered at this farm festival. They are very busy with professional development, as you can see there, attending lots of meetings. They are working on their winter session planned. As Emily mentioned, we will have Lisa Wheeler next summer, which is very exciting. And our holiday, the staff has a holiday spirit committee and they have some really fun stuff planned. I always love what the holiday spirit committee does. I actually probably should have you step, step by the staff kitchen to see what they did to me, so. That was rather fun. And adult services, they are ordering some storage containers to get some of their, they do so much stuff, so many crafts, so many fun things there. So they're gonna get a little bit more organized back there. We are working with the Oakland County Animal Shelter again. And thanks to Amy, I really appreciate this. The Libraries for Life, which is a donor program, which was very much in existence before COVID, but obviously stopped and, but they're getting back into that. And so we're gonna be a pilot library for the re-establishment of that Libraries for Life program.
And what is that program?
So what it is, it's really very simple, it's mainly a table. And sometimes they're able to have a volunteer that can talk to people, they ask about what it is to donate your organ donation. Sometimes they have the, they'll give you, lend you the quilt, which is the Libraries for Life quilt. And it kind of shows different families that have benefited from that.
So this is for organ donation?
Right. Yeah, it was a very big program pre-COVID. So they usually, and most often times it's just an informational table. So, but we're gonna see what they're, what they want to do with that. The library is also going to serve as a dental site for the Braille and Talking Books Library. I'm very excited to get this going again, where we will receive a digital typing book machine to display for patrons as well as to take out an outreach to some of our senior facilities. And we will also promotional materials for the Braille and Talking Book Library. Youth and teen, so they've made some quick changes to their areas, their movie areas. And as you know, they are working with the local illustrator mascots. We have connected with a couple of new volunteers for the landscaping. And we have received a comment from one of our patrons who is here quite a bit, very nice man. Please convey my appreciation to Maria, Mary Lou and Emily for their help in the ID Lab. He does a lot of work in our ID Lab and is a very big proponent of that and bringing people into the library. We are so fortunate to have this library and recent staff in White Lake Township, so thank you to him. September, we have not hired someone in September, so there's nothing there. If you call, this is kind of fun, Amy and I were listening to our whole music and kind of overrated that be, this is kind of like a downer. And I said, you know, we just had something a little more cheesy, a little more fun. And so, yeah, they were able to do that, so we now have a cheesy new music and we're listening on hold. And then very excited, Maria got a Kodak Scanza digital film scanner. I am so excited about this.
So what is this?
Yeah. Yeah, so this, you can bring in negatives, let's give the old negatives, I have saw a couple of old negatives from my mom's first marriage. And I'm gonna bring those in because it will scan them and then you can upload them to a digital file. And then you can print them and you can print pictures of things you never had, or slides and things like that, so. So excited about this, so thank you to her, so. Takes dream work, teamwork to make the dream work and thank you to my team. Statistics, moving on to statistics, a little lower this month, but still looking good. Circulation and new cards. Still in a good range, new door count. And computer usage. Wifi look. Yeah, everything looked pretty good. And moving on to committee reports. William, that's the building committee up first.
Yeah, okay, I'll go ahead here. So Monday, September 8th at 4:00 PM, we met. We discussed the Blue Water Technology Sign and permission to been approved. LEDs are tentatively due to arrive in the States early October. Doing customs and arrival Blue Water takes a couple of weeks. Once the LED arrives at the facility, they will contact us about scheduling. Updates, a digital counter space in the ID Lab, installed the counter space, however, handles are a shade different. And April has reached out to address that. Parking lot seal coating is restriping. We added this project to the 2026 budget for board review, discussed possibility of partnering with the township with supervisor and clerk, and they've negotiated these contracts for a long time. Other roof, missing about 25 feet of soffit area per the roofer, it looks like it was never installed, waiting a quote. Window coatings, we have nothing more on that. Kim's office, there is no longer a smell in the office, but we are continuing to monitor the situation. Oh, that's good to hear on the smell, no smelling. The youth area wall near the information desk, looking at additional storage, hanging systems for the youth stems kits and early literacy backpacks. Another idea is something digital and interactive that would draw youth families to that area of the building. Coming, we look for vinyl graphics in the youth area. Mascots for the library. Emily gave us a little tour of the area and presented some of the designs and we had a few minute discussion. Then we have a local illustrator design samples, youth patio, outdoor musical instruments. We're looking at some interactive percussion instruments that can be installed on the youth patio area in 2026. Long range capital plan. Well, we discussed the building committee to a return to creating a capital plan outline for strategy to the strategic planning goals, assess lifespan, condition, future costs, major building components and furnishing. In addition to the capital outline plan, we will need future board discussion on the following protocol. Define the plan, I'll be reaching out to. Okay, I guess C2A.
The company.
That's the company, man, okay. All right, that's a weird way to put it. To start with the original design and we still want to stay with that, do we still want to stay with that design or look into something else? We obviously have to check updated costs, timeframe. Then we discuss the generator issue again. Do we just purchase something for the heating system? 2025 budget goals were to investigate the cost of repairing wall cracks and painting. Projects has been added to the 2026 budget for board review and investigate the cost of the full carpet furniture cleaning 2026. This has also been added to the 2026 budget for board review. Our next meeting is Monday, October 13th, 4:00 PM via Zoom.
Yes, finance, please. The finance committee met Wednesday, September 10th at 4:00 PM and we met Tuesday, September 16th at 4:00 PM. We did review the 2025 budget and reviewed and discussed part of the 2026 budget. We discussed the CD updates that Gwen made the motion up earlier. We went over the legacy sponsorships and donation brochure and we will need the naming rights policy before that can be released. We reviewed the square ACH addition to addendum one of the financial policy. We need to add square for the, to the policy for various returns of funds such as canceled room reservations or if a patron finds a book. The committee goals, and we're still looking into the library foundation, exploring and defining village options. We did an introduction meeting with political consultant Dave Forsmart. He provided information on how we would handle, how he could handle our village campaign. The costs could depend on the strategy or what we would like to use him for. The library can pay to determine how much of a village to go for in the ballot verbiage, that would be a consultant fee. If it is for advocacy or campaigning, that would be the yes committee. And then we did not touch on the capitalization policy update. Our next meeting is Tuesday, September 30th at 4:00 PM via Zoom.
Thank you, Becky. Who's next?
Policy committee, that's you, Eric. That is. So the policy committee met on Tuesday, September 2nd at 5:00 PM. I was not present, so I'm gonna lean on Gwen and April to fill in any color commentary on this. So for the minutes, they reviewed the patron behavior and violations policy from the attorney and reviewed the naming rights policy for the attorney as well. Also reviewed proposed, proposed changes to the current unintended children policy, which will be on hold until we bring the updated patron behavior policies to the board for approval. And reviewed progress on the list of other potential library policies from the attorney. The next one on the list is naming rights, I know that was talked about during the meeting as well. Any other additional?
No, the patron behavior one that came from the attorney. We'll look at it again when we have our next meeting and for the most part it was, yes.
So next meeting is Tuesday, October the 7th at 5:00 PM.
Just wanna, I found that on the sheet I'm passing around, so those are just the, what the building committee saw was far more percussion instruments that could be installed on the patio. The one is cattails.
Cattails is cool.
Yeah, I've seen that at a couple of other places and it's very nice.
Yeah, it's very nice and it's well.
Have you seen this in person? It's beautiful.
Yeah.
Makes this.
It's called percussion, I think it's called percussion.
I have not seen the, the dragonfly before. I'm trying to think of where I just saw those cattails and they're really, really nice.
What does the dragonfly, I, I couldn't quite figure out the dragonfly like.
So, do you know that Blue Water does? Audiovisual, stuff like that. I don't know what they would even compare to that.
I think they're more digital, which is.
That's cool.
So this actually makes, makes a sound based on the construction of it. So it's like a glass of bottles. Whole, whole different concept.
It will look really nice in, in.
As far as their CD planning committee, we met. We reviewed the plan where we were to date, looks like we're pretty much done. That we're gonna talk about third year and final year factors coming up here in December of our meeting. And I think we decided as a team that we would extend the plan that we have past year's reading and I don't think there's anything else related to this. But it says the bones of the moving forwards. And then as far as looking at improving access to the building, I, you know, more hours or stuff like that. We have a survey that's out and about 122 people that responded, they have till the end of the month, which is, you know, basically it's Mondays. And, oh, do you have the preliminary time?
Yeah, they're in our, they're in our package.
And so some days weren't possible as we thought they would be. Well, I thought the last page said that some days were. Actually, if you, if you read through the documentation. Extended hours wasn't as important to a lot of people. That said.
23% believe that extended hours were.
Okay.
This is something I created, but did you, did you include that, that original one in there?
Okay, all right, let me talk about.
I just wanna give you guys a progress. And that was it for strategic planning?
Okay, so I think extending past year three.
Yeah.
Would be good.
I don't think we need a whole other blowout planning.
We're gonna discuss that new business?
Well, we have another full year of the strategic plan, this is only 2025 and it goes through 2026.
So we'll move on to the village under Oakland.
Okay. You want me to speak to a little bit of what I've given you?
Um, yes, and then were you able to, did you get copies of the, of the lease and fire?
Yes, it took me a while.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we've got a long one called our new ones, so that shows you the library's three villages. The one that we are, we need to work on for 2026 this coming year, which is up at the end of this December, is Library Three. So this one was voted in, it started in 2010 at a point four. And so you can see where it was in 2018, it looks like you must have done just a renewal, I think Jen, you had mentioned that, rather than a renew and restore, so that was point three six.
Was that because we were during, during the building, under construction.
Those that we've really discussed in store, we haven't really talked about the store since the last as village, yeah, so it really wasn't on our radar at that point.
To do a restore.
To do a restore.
Okay, thank you.
So this, as you can see here, is giving you the up-to-date how Headley has pulled this back. And so in the coming year, this coming year for 2026, which the money will start coming in this December, right, in a couple of months, will be at point three six oh three. So it's just showing you how that Headley takes it down. If you were going to renew it, that would be the number, if you just did a straight-up renewal with no restore.
It would be three.
It would be three six oh three.
Right.
And we're starting at point four.
No.
Well, that's if you, you two, if you look under options, which is the next page. And this is a little bit about what I've already shared in the findings, I did video a little bit more. So I showed to them and you can, the pros and cons of doing renew with no restore. And the two is a renew and restore to the 2018 amount. Most reasons for that. And then number three is a renew and restore to the original amount. Or number four, which has been talked about and thrown out there many times, to combine the library, you know, which three months. So there are, there are pros and cons to all of these, but there's a strength that you should probably take in.
Can we legally say renew and restore though to the original 2010 amount?
So those are all things that you're going to have to discuss either probably with the attorney.
Sure, because I'm not sure we can do that. I don't know.
Mainly this package, just to kind of help you know, help you to see what's available and to know what maybe we want to talk about. The political consultant has also said under, as far as consulting, he can help with verbiage. Once you decide what you want. The next sheet is coming from six knowledge goal, this is just some real basic stuff, I, they do not have yet to leave full amount of dates, like when we need to get the village community, so I'm keeping an eye on that, watching out soon as possible.
Because I think the last time we did this, we made sure that we had the verbiage into the, to the clerk's office a month before the deadline, so we need to keep track. Yeah, we need to keep close track of this and make sure that we don't miss anything. Well, this is our September meeting, we're gonna have to probably have a decision in December or January at the very latest.
Okay, I did want to give you the, what you had before for the 2022, 2022 village. So you'll see that wording, I broke it out rather than, since then, I just. knowledge. Um so you'll see that wording. I broke it out rather than condensing. I just further personally, I like to see kind of the the crumbs of it separated cuz it helps me to see it a little bit bit better and I thought that might help for you to see it a little bit better. Um so that was the wider knowledge proposal there. Uh so I then just took that, uh did some of the math and tried to give you a look of what if you did the same thing that you did in twenty twenty-two, which was renew and restore. I took it to the what is listed as the twenty fifteen amount, not the whole point four.
Okay.
That's what you're seeing on that one.
And this verbiage in twenty twenty-two was directly from our from the attorneys.
That is direct, that is exact, that's that's yes, that's what was on.
It was up was on the ballot, but we accept what the attorneys recommended.
So this number that you have here. Point three six zero three, is that just like a typo?
It's point three six zero three. So this this was our this was our verbiage from the millage in twenty twenty-two. Okay, this is the current millage in twenty twenty-six. For well, the millage for twenty twenty-five, this is the current what it is right now, because it goes down each year with the headland amendment. Okay, so that's if we said this is if we're just gonna do a renew, that it would be this amount. Okay, and okay, and store last millage of this amount, right? Alright, so then it comes up to three point three eight six. Six one, alright. This is the same. But I don't know, is that is that six hundred fifty thousand dollars really accurate? Because um and I'm asking that because that's what was twenty twenty-two and um I don't know what the tax base is at this point for going through.
Yeah, I did round. It is fairly close.
Okay, so the tax base hasn't really changed in four years and in White Lake.
I like I just it's not the final. I can run the number.
Okay. Well, actually, uh you know what, they're two different millage amounts. So they probably it's less, it's less than the millage that we did in twenty twenty-two. So it probably does come about up to about that. Okay.
The last thing I did uh give you, uh which is the what the police and fire did is twenty twenty-two. I'm there. So you've got their verbiage there. So this is all for you to consider and help you to make a decision. And to give me some suggestions, anything that you want to see. I know um uh Gwen had a good idea of what can you have some other libraries that had higher percentage. Um yes, votes, which um I can do that. Whatever you want me to bring, let me know. Email me, call me, text.
And exhibit A, the piece all passed.
Yes.
They did.
So did Anthony mention whether or not there was going to be any police fire coming?
There is not.
There's not.
There is not. For what we know today, only the library knowledge. I don't know if the if there would be a school one or not.
That I don't know, but schools you don't like to go at that time. Usually.
This consultant gonna come to the meeting in like November or December to review stuff with the full board?
I can ask for whatever we want.
Position to do it.
No, I don't think so. I mean, um one, we don't have a yes campaign yet. If we want him to come to the board and we want him to talk about the verbiage, we need to approve paying him at this meeting or in the October meeting. And we could probably find out what he would charge us for that amount for for that timeframe. He gave us a number for the overall, which was very reasonable, I thought. Um but if we want him to come in November or December, we do need to vote on it, at least in the October meeting, that we would be pay we would pay him for his consulting fees.
You're speaking of the attorney?
No, the there's a consultant that we were recommended to use.
David Fordmark.
Yes. And um um he would help us with the verbiage for the millage. He'd also, he has access to databases that we don't have access to that will tell us and um where to spend them the well, it wouldn't be us to be the yes campaign people, where to spend the money for um advertising and getting in getting um information out to the right people that actually take the time to vote in a um limit in a primary.
Okay. Well, it's gonna be a well-attended primary. Just if you know the political atmosphere going on, I would say it's gonna be a higher attended primary than most.
Yeah, it should be, to tell you the truth, right, because of the governor's.
It'd be SOS.
Right, right, you hear it on the radio all the time. There was just somebody else I just heard on the re- on one of the like nine fifty or, you know, news station that somebody just else just threw their hat in the race for SOS, so. I just I don't remember who it was. I just heard. A man. I don't know. I just heard the end of it, you know, like literally at five thirty today.
Okay, probably new, probably brand new.
Yeah, so I don't know who that is. So that is true.
Who met was?
The finance. The the finance committee met with him. Um and he was recommended by um Anthony Noble. Um he does, he's done many, many libraries and he can bring us more information about what he's done for libraries in the past, but he's done many, he's done um villages with many libraries and he recommends that um we only ever we only really target people that actually come out and vote in a primary. Right, so so he had he had a lot of really good advice and we can him come talk. I'm sure he would come and talk to the board. Um and he did say that he would help us with verbiage and and he'd help the yes campaign with um marketing and strategy. So he can help us with strategy. We can we can we're legally able to pay a consultant for that verbiage and some strategy work, so.
As a side note to this millage, um I did run into Anthony uh yesterday. Uh and he did have a question that I need to relay to you. So they are thinking of condensing their polling locations on the last day of voting for the primary and the general. So you know how you have the two weeks and then you have a day.
Nine days.
Close day and then you have the actual Tuesday. Um so he's asking to see if you want the library to be a polling place.
On early voting?
No, just the one day, just the actual voting day, not.
Just election day.
Election day.
November.
Have we ever been a polling?
You you have never been a polling place.
Why why does he?
Yeah, why would we do that now?
We're going to condense the amount of home locations, um not so much in the schools anymore.
So there's an underlying issue why they're gonna condense. It'd be permanent. Well, the the reason is is it's called consolidation. Cuz right now you only allow two thousand nine hundred ninety-nine voters per precinct.
Right.
That has been changed via Prop two in twenty twenty-two for up to four thousand four hundred ninety-nine. So we're gonna go from thirteen precincts down to a certain small amount of precincts. And he says that'll happen before the primary.
It would be the primary and the general.
But it'll happen with well, he has to consolidate before then. Okay.
I think we need to know a lot more about what our responsibilities are as a polling before we would make that commitment. Um just in other institutions that I work in, it is a really big deal and they there's a lot of um planning around it. I guess we.
Fifteen-hour day.
It is a very big deal. Um it is something.
But but just bringing it up and we and this, you know, we need to know a lot more about what our responsibilities are as a as as a institution to actually run that polling.
So that's what I wanna know. Do you want to me to ask him different questions? Do you want me to ask him to attend a meeting?
I'd like to see in writing what what um we what our expectations are.
I'd like to know what the alternatives are if we don't.
Why wouldn't he present to the board?
Well, I'd like to see it. He can't more than, yeah, absolutely, but I would like to see. I mean, there's gotta be information. Just asking us a offhand question isn't isn't something we can make a decision on. We have to know what it entails to be a polling location. And is this a one-time thing? Is this gonna be permanent? You know, when they open the um township next door and the township buildings next door, would that be a polling station instead of the library? Because this is our largest space and this isn't all that big.
This isn't big enough.
I don't see where it's really big enough to give any real privacy, to tell you the truth. I mean, we can have some s- space in here, but I'm looking at this compared to, you know, using these um these gymnasiums in these elementary schools.
Elementary is three times, three times as big as this.
You know, the old senior center, which is half of the size, was a polling center also.
Um and two things about that commerce library where's where I vote, their program was not as big as ours. Um at Novi, we were a polling place there. Not at first, but halfway through the time I was there. Yeah, we had to, we had gates that could come down. Uh we did use it as an opportunity to get library card sign up, so there were some positives to it. Um so just something to think about. Uh you do have the doors in and out. You also um can lock so that from seven A M to ten A M you they won't have access, but you do have bathrooms. And worst-case scenario, um it does close at eight, which is when we close. But you could also direct them to come in through that door and go out that door. So you do have options in this room, which is why he's probably um thinking about it. So. So something to think about.
Like I said, we actually see in writing would be what we'd be obligated to do and what the expectations are. I mean, I'm there. There's gotta be something formal around being a polling station.
I'd like to know if the fallback is if we don't.
Like at the when we were at Fulton School or we were at the um country club. The people that helped set up, take down and all that stuff were not employees of that facility.
Right, right. That's not what I'm saying at all. No, I'm, you know, I'm at Saint Patrick every day and um we have two polling.
That's my.
So there's there's two polls there and they split um Patty Hall, which is like four times the size and it's very, very crowded. And there is all kinds of procedures that they have to go through to have those people come and go. You know, there's all these safety procedures. We need to, there has to be in writing what the expectations are of an institution that that um the polling station uses that facility. There has to be, and that's what I'm looking for.
I would wanna see diagrams with a written plan. What it would look like.
I mean, there's simple things like, you know, like April was saying, you know, we have access to the bathrooms, right? Um what are, you know, I just wanna know what 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 were required to have. I mean, I don't see, I know that other libraries do it. I don't see any huge issue. I see that it's being crowded in here.
We can't, you know, we can't do a two-week thing. We don't have a generator, so that's the problem. My concern is, and I still brought up done with this, so what our result.
There you go.
That's been a problem. I still think that's a problem. But.
I'd say so.
Well.
They give us the requirements. I mean, I I don't wanna spend a lot of time talking about this cuz we don't know what it is. Just tell them we'd like some something in writing what basic expectations are on your side.
That's really, that that is really crucial. We don't have backup, we don't have backup power.
Yeah, that's a problem.
Okay, I'll ask them for those things.
Yeah, thank you.
I assume he's willing to fund the backup power. Well, he can ask us about the others.
So coming going into next month's meeting, we we need to really um.
Yes, what would you like to see from this stuff? The stuff you asked for definitely.
Everybody's gonna have to really read through these. We need to understand. I think that we'll we can talk about it in the finance meeting as well. I think we need to go back to the lawyer and um one of the things we need to, we probably need to vote on in um October or November is um what we're gonna go for. Are we gonna do a renewal? We're gonna do a renewal and restore. Um we need to ask the lawyer if we can go back to twenty to the um to do a renewal and restore of the twenty-ten millage, which was um point four. Um instead of um for um. Right. So we need to really think about, you know, what we think is viable and um and, you know, fair to the to the taxpayers of the community, you know. So obviously, we want the millage renewed to maintain what we have today. So um the police and fire millage was slightly, it was um was slightly different than ours. I didn't think it was all that much different in the way that they in in the way they ordered it. And April's gonna come back with some millages that if you could send them out at a time that we can review that are from other libraries. So we have an idea, but I think when we come back here in uh um October, we really should be making a decision on what we wanna go forward with. In November, maybe we could we could approve um the verbiage. Okay.
And is at the November meeting, is that where you would consider um making a decision on whether you want, what you would, would you want Dave Forrest Mark to come to a November or December meeting?
Yeah, budget approval and.
How long's it gonna take to get a yes campaign together? Now you said, I'm gonna do a yes campaign put together, so will we pay him?
Well. Well, no, cuz we can pay him for um the verbiage for the millage and for strategy. As a consultant.
And then I can also, on these pros and cons, I can give you the amount that the amounts. So what you would, like if you did renew with no restore, what that might look like. And then renew for the all the different ones.
Okay.
Does Anthony said anything about the tax base itself going up and all? Like the.
That was my first, that was my question cuz this it was the same amount of money.
It's gone. Each year that I've done the budget, you can see it has gone up regardless of um the Headley. So the Headley's pulled it back a little bit, but because.
It's gone back.
Right.
Okay. I guess that's the only question I do. All right, we wanna move on to new business?
Yeah, that's why I'm not sure about the six hundred fifty thousand. Okay. Alright, so does that sound like a decent plan, April, for timing? Cuz we've we've got a.
Yes, let me just repeat that back. So and I'll work on adding the amounts. Um verbiage comes from other villages. And then the number of the force matter. And if if any others, you have any any other suggestions along?
And a decision, we need to make a, if we would send out that kind of information ahead of time, um in October, we need to make a decision in October, I think. Um what we're gonna ask for.
One through four, that sheet.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And then verbiage and a consultant. We can review verbiage in in November, talk with the consultant and approve it and descend it. We'd be ready for the first of the year. Thank you.
Right, so we must taking care of the first of fighting on new business, so. And I need to get to vendors or square.
Uh okay, so again, I'm bringing you the addendum. Um alright, so we've got where we've got square, I've got the equipment, we've got the policy. Now we just need to implement it and part of that process is is that square deposit your money uh via A C H into your bank account. But as you know, you could um have, we do get, you know, some people that find their books after they've paid for them. And so it would need, that would go back onto their credit card. So after come out um of of the bank account to go through that. Uh the reason I put twelve hundred on there as the top amount that would come out is because that is the amount uh like for a room rental. If someone canceled a room rental and they had literally rented this room, the kitchen and patio of itself. And they had literally rented this room, the kitchen and patio, that's the highest, and they were on that list. To the highest amount that that would be, so I still anticipate that happening and I don't anticipate. It happening more than the amount, more than I'm saying, four to six times a year, I'm not saying that four to six times a year that could happen. It's four to six times a year that there could be a small amount. We know how much books are running, so maybe, you know, thirty, forty dollars, and you see the checks that come through. When, when you, when you sign check, so for lost items that are returned. So that's all that really is, it's just adding in Square to this, to that policy.
So are we voting on that?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we accept the addendum one EFT slash ACH approved vendor list to include Square. For patron credit card services and frequency four to six times per year at twelve hundred dollars, the maximum.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
For instance, you're an A, I think.
Yes.
Your snow removal clothes?
Um, things we use right now.
Jake Ryan.
That's why I thought. I'm like, that name looks awfully familiar. Okay.
Yeah, so a couple of snow coats, four kids that time. That Jake Ryan since twenty twenty two, I really have not had an issue. With, with them, they are very responsive, I bet. Paul is the owner, I've got Paul on, I don't know. Cell phone, um, you know, he's great, I can call it, you know, it's, I'll actually call and say, I called him a couple of times and say, you know. Hey, well, how's it look out there, you know, what, what are, what are we saying, cuz there's times where it's, it's just really bad, you know, we've had a couple of snow closures where. It's, it's just been one of those things that either delayed opening or snow closing and Paul's very good at giving me good information. He's also very good at taking care of parking lot, or if I do say, hey, you know. I, I need to do an extra run by and an extra scrape or an extra thing, he throws down salt sometimes when I don't even. It's just those crystals, like kids, crystals is throwing down salt. So, yeah, so I've been pretty happy with them, I did wanna add in this past year, there were a couple of times on a Saturday where. You know, we, where I don't have my facilities guy on a Saturday, so if he can't make it in, you know, we've talked, we'll say, okay. We need to come in to do some shoveling of the sidewalks, if he's not available, there are a couple of times I came in, you know, slap a hand on my head, some, some snow boots and I came in and I'm shoveling. I thought consulting, so that's just not realistic, so I think we need to add in. Them, a company being able to take care of that, because it's just not reliable to.
So we didn't have that previously?
No, we were taking care of our own.
Okay.
Walkways, yeah, so. Yeah, and get to staff, you know, Amy's just thrown on it. You know, we've all kinda ran out there and during the day too, we run out there and then we try to keep it as safe as we can for our people, so.
But what does this mean when they, when they say that they'll, they'll do the sidewalk, what if it needs to be done twice in one day?
Yeah, so then they'll keep checking on it, it doesn't, it doesn't take us out of the equation, but it definitely improves it for us, so. I'm not coming in on a Saturday morning and spending three hours. So, yeah, so that's. So you've, we've got options.
Okay.
We've done the all inclusive, that's where we did before, we have options to do multiple seasons. The other option is Harden, so Chris is great, who did a great job on our lawn, there, I, again, I don't have any problems with their lawn service and all of that and. I, I guess my, my issue is just between the two of them is the cost.
Yeah, sure. And Jake Ryan's in. All the salt.
Then unlimited salt. I don't know the other one.
Everything you're looking at is under the top all inclusive, I'm sorry, I should have been more clear about that when I sent this out.
So option one is its own option.
Correct.
All by.
Okay, it says rock salt will be applied on all paved surfaces when ice and conditions exist, ice medium will be applied to all walkways, okay. And we pay him. On a payment schedule and we don't pay it all upfront, correct?
That's correct, so you'll see that breakdown there, it's the seven, seven thousand three hundred ninety three. So you pay in November and you pay in January. Twice a season.
So he doesn't want three years up?
I thought we paid him on a three year contract.
It is a three year contract, so it's fourteen thousand seven hundred eighty six a year.
Right, well, it comes to twenty two thousand for both, twenty two thousand something. So, but we pay them basically over that life of that contract, if we find, sign a three year contract, right? And it's gonna be this amount for three years. Each year, and then we pay, so we make six payments is what you're saying. Okay.
What's the annual for Jake?
It's twenty two something, I just did the math on it, hang on. It's fourteen seven.
It's just the fourteen thousand.
Just fourteen thousand, yeah, the number below it is a breakdown.
And below that, it's half of that.
That's half, the half price.
Oh, I thought that was for the, I'm sorry, I thought it was for the, the, the sidewalks. Okay, well, that just sounds, the differences.
Difference is dramatic.
Very dramatic.
So what's the other one?
It's right here, turn the page. It's right there.
Let's see, for one year?
Correct, that is for one year, correct?
The twenty seven thousand four, Harden's, right, yes.
Um. Cuz I read that a couple of times and I was trying to make sure that I understood that, that, because there's. Five total installments. Let's see, okay. And so if you go down to billing, it says payment for season is due in five equal installments. And or before November first, December, January, February and March. So. But what I don't understand is when I looked at this.
I'm still confused on the, on the term of the contract.
Go ahead, John.
Very bottom, it says this contract represents a three year agreement, twenty five through twenty eight snow season.
Yeah, he does something similar with, it's, it's really not so much different than Jake Ryan's and it's not, it's similar to his lawn, so. You. So it's for instance, if you, you've got, it's still gonna be twenty seven, five, twenty five, paid over five installments for one year. If you do, it looks like you did a. Well, yeah, this country does for a three year.
It's doubled the price.
Um, you're right.
Yeah.
Um.
So that's, it's still twenty seven, five, twenty five for a year, five install.
Here's what I don't understand, and I thought, okay, this bit is based on a seasonal price of fifteen, five, twenty five. Based on unlimited salt for walkway and parking lot.
Plus the.
And then it says total price for unlimited salt and plowing, so is this, this fifteen, five, twenty five just the salt?
That's salt and ice management and then plowing preseason all in plus, wait, snow removal, that's the twelve thousand.
Okay.
You get the twelve thousand there plus.
Okay, got it.
Five twenty five.
So. So basically, he's charging us for salt and Jake Ryan is not charging for salt.
It's not salting for free.
Right, so I'm like. How does that work? Because, because, because Harden's actually breaks down their salt cost.
Yeah, that's, that price changes. They know right now, they're buying right now, paying right now for next year's salt, not this year, so next year's salt. So they can lock in the price. What if you just did, are they both three year contracts or two year?
They're options, if Ryan offers a, you can do it as one, two or three.
I just think we should, we should verify with Jake that that includes, I mean, it says salt, but it just seems odd that one. The salt is twice as much, you know, when you add that salt, it's twice as much. Is this what you paid Jake last year?
No, no. No, it's more expensive because we're adding in the sidewalks.
Okay.
So he paid less than worth this last year.
And that included salt?
It included salt, yeah.
It's, it's the same wording, the only difference is it's adding in, and I can tell you which sentence is added in. This and sidewalk shoveling will be performed, that's, it's the entire sidewalk shoveling.
Okay.
And applying to the walkways, that's the only difference, lots of, everything word for word. I know because I went over and over, the origin was twenty twenty two, I did about five times that.
Okay.
Well, I read this, don't agree with that, red line that, red line this.
If you've been happy with their work, I don't see why we wouldn't go for, continue.
Does, over a three year period of time without a reduction in rate based on Jake Ryan's. Right, no, this other guys. It's double the price. Yeah, it's not, it's about ninety five percent. Higher.
And this is the, this is company that does our, our law, our law.
So there's no discount for already being a long push.
No, and I think that's why, why when we went with Jake Ryan, that's why we went with him, is because there wasn't a discount between. Cuz they consider them too separate.
Okay, so the contract for with Jake Ryan's coming up, do up?
November.
And then with the, with the added verbiage, that was, you guys probably mostly doing sidewalks.
So you're confident that the sidewalks will be done in this new contract, right?
Oh, he'd hear from you.
Yeah, if we done with that, everything's good with that, I moved it, we accept Jake Ryan as presented.
Ready, second?
Second.
And I ask, do you?
All in favor?
Before you finish that up, do you want me to sign for one, two or three? Yeah.
Believe these. Where's, where's the show in here that he gets a discount on every second and third years?
Right here.
It's twenty twenty five, twenty six, I have initial one, two or three, which, which? Would you like me to sign for?
Okay, I get that part.
I'd give the vote, but I'd say three.
Yeah, I just think that he's gonna, his prices are gonna end up going up.
Yeah, can't imagine they won't, right? They don't go down, not usually.
So I meant that to be a three year contract.
You want a second, you want me to? I'll second.
I, I meant it to be a three year contract.
Yeah, what's interesting about it, like if you look at the difference in prices, just at what they charge per application for rock salt. Between the two, it's two hundred and forty with Harden and it's one seventy eight with Jake Ryan. So right there is like the, the upcharge, it's just a representative percentage wise, it's similar to the percentage we're paying extra.
And there is a service cancellation. Um, in, in Jake Ryan's contract, we've, if, if we're not happy, we, we give them thirty days written notice.
It's reasonable.
There was four guys votes? Yes, man.
Yes. Okay.
You wanna vote?
Can we vote? Nope.
Aye.
Aye.
I think we all did.
We stopped, we stopped your vote, second, I'll hear what. April had to say for a second. We're just doing the vote.
Yeah.
You guys like friendly amendments, man?
Yeah, of course, for me.
Well, we started voting, then I was like, we give us a lot.
Yeah, wait a minute, wait, okay.
Next item is the twenty twenty six friends list, does anybody have anything to add to that, like a? We'd like to add to the list.
Um, I brought up to April today and I think, and you sent us, no doubt, I'd like us to see, I'd like to see us do that. At the ancestry library edition, since we have extra money from the, the friends this year. It's something that every library in our area has except for White.
Okay, so let me.
Okay, let's, okay, let's talk about this.
It was a busy day, I did some work with William. I think I was just like, whoa, I need some more coffee, I don't need more coffee, okay.
And the coffee machine was on my list.
Alrighty, okay, so good news about the ancestry is, yeah, I, I've actually had a lot of experience with that at Novi. And the wonderful thing about, about that was actually when it first, when we first got it, wow, this is really expensive and it's not gonna use and blah, 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 blah. Okay, spin it a little bit forward, their local history. Room is located there and we wound up getting a genealogy group that kinda helped to encourage them. So, any, I, I said to Amy, I'm like, help, and so she reached out to our friend over there and got us some updated numbers, how was it going? Very interesting, so, and their public cost structure would be similar, okay? To what they use, based on ancestry's tiers of cost. And I'm happy to say, I was pleasantly surprised. So not only is it something that, yeah, you wanna put it in here on Ask the Friends to take, you know, do that for a year. Or if you would like me to, I haven't brought you the budget yet, I can change.
Um, so.
I'm adding to online research.
I have no idea what it costs, what are the, what, can I, what tier are we looking at?
To cover our, you know, thirty thousand plus people, you're looking at. And I, I still have to confirm, I would still have to talk to the company, but I know Amy did reach out to D L N also to see if there was any.
Does T L N do anything with ancestry, okay? I knew that, I looked, I looked at that at first, right?
Currently do have. We currently do have Heritage Quest, which is, is very useful and can be used outside of the library, so. The ancestry library edition cannot, you have to use it in here, in the library.
That's for. So I thought that it had. Tears and one of them you could, people could use with their user ID.
So, again, I have to check.
Okay, and, and I, why I thought that was cuz I thought I know somebody that's a president of a genealogical society that uses it at home.
She using it through her library?
Yes.
Okay, so.
But I don't know how, because that, because they're the president of the genealogical society and they're doing this work. On behalf of people sending requests to the library, do you know, and people will request from the library. Hey, I, I'm trying to look this up, what do I do, they say, we're gonna send you to the genealogy department, they send them an email, this person works on this stuff. And I know that they work on it from home, but that's really the, all I know.
Okay, so I do wanna do, yeah, and that's, if, if that turns out to be, you know, we still need to investigate it, but. You know, it, it won't take us long to look into it and see it, I, I personally use my own ancestry. I've got that app on my phone, I use it, I reuse it a lot.
So what, but it's, it's reasonable, it's what you're saying, price wise.
Yeah, it looks like, and nobody, nobody just shared their cost for twenty five, twenty six, it was two thousand two hundred forty six. She did let us know that in order to offer a remote access option, they added Heritage Quest online through ProQuest, which is. Which is more robust than what the state offers, it's not as popular, but luckily it's not too expensive, so we keep renewing. And that one was an additional one thousand two hundred thirty one dollars, but that's, that's still not accessing ancestry, do you see what I'm saying, so?
Okay, so Heritage Quest is the. Okay, so Heritage Quest is the, maybe that's the one, that's one, you can allow people to, to access it.
Yes, we're now, we get it, we do it right now.
Okay, so, but, um, and I had thought everything I read was ancestry was in, in library only.
It is, yeah.
Okay, but it's, we're talking under three K a year for that subscription.
That's.
It's a bargain.
And that, and, and that does that, yeah, and does that give us, what kind, I don't have any idea what kind of records it gives. I've just had people ask me for it and I thought, okay, now's the time to ask for it.
It features a broader, more international collection of records than Heritage Quest.
Okay, yeah.
Um, I know, like in my own case, I definitely wanted to look at some international, the further back in time I went.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Um, more filtering options, um.
Okay.
Do you know if it's got a, like a training program we could send, or have people here? Take classes in, so.
I'm not sure.
To be a resource.
Yeah, so that would be a longer, that would be, uh. More in the future, um, I know Waterford has a very robust genealogy.
That's who I used to use all the time, I always went to Waterford, yeah.
So I.
They, they, their, their, their records are amazing, what they have, yeah.
So anyway, that was one of my questions, is training, so pit staff would be able to help people.
Right.
Then, having some kind of a programming event to kick it off.
Sure, yeah, I mean, we, of course, maybe go through, you know, finance to do that, asking the friends to.
Maybe do that part of it and we do the other part of it through our budget. Uh, the yearly cost through budget and then expect to help with training and, and programming. Was my thought.
Um, I don't think there'd be a cost of the training, uh, I know that, um, right now, we're not, we don't get a whole lot of. What I understand, we don't get a whole lot of requests for, um, genealogy stuff, but I'm sure if you put this out there, we.
Well, probably, because people know we don't do it.
I, I do a lot of genealogy, I wouldn't use it here until now, cause if we had it.
If we had it, right, but we don't, but, you know, Highland has it, and Highland's got a big historical group, Waterford's is, is very, very robust. Um, and.
Used to have, gun to Detroit, used Detroit Public Libraries.
Which is fabulous.
And to what Jen says too, um, because that is labor intensive to. One this, and that's one of the things that we faced at Novi, too, and that's why if through the local history, we were able to get some volunteers to actually sit down with people.
Right.
And build trees and things like that, so, actually, I do like your suggestion that maybe there would be some friends or some, another way to get people to volunteer for the library.
Talk to the Whiteley Historical Society.
And well, that's what I was thinking.
I think I moved here, did they, and they used to be at Fisk.
So they hold their meetings here now.
And they.
Yeah, see, that would be ideal.
Yeah.
Because I, I know a couple of people that are, um, presidents of their genealogical society and. They meet at the library and that's what they do, is the library staff doesn't do that research and that help, it's from, it's from those volunteers.
So, I guess my question to you is, do you? Where, what do you want me to do, do you want me to add it to friends first, or do you want me to see if I can just fit it in the budget?
Um, if there's other things that friends can do and we can fit it in the budget, I think that would be great. Um, and then, you, you know, if, if you've got room in the budget, I think that would be really great, I mean, it's not really that expensive.
It's not, and I do, um, I do pad online resources, so it can do a little bit of finagling and, um.
Yeah, my feeling about it, being in the budget, it makes it more of a permanent addition.
Right.
Less like, less likely to be ephemeral, right?
Programming, we, we ask friends to cover.
Or the friends could have a pilot program and we take it over the year after.
Okay, that sounds good.
Let's see if we're gonna be planning, setting money aside for a protocol and.
Well, I was, that was one of the things that I was thinking that we could ask the friends for, we had money left over that they, we really didn't have tagged. Could they give like a ten thousand dollar contribution to that, to that restricted fund for, specifically for the protocol? And start, you know, saying, okay, we're gonna give the library forty-five thousand dollars a year, could ten thousand dollars of that? I don't know if that's doable, but could ten thousand dollars of that go towards this protocol? But that has to go back to the building department, building group to decide, is that something we're going to pursue? We don't want the, we don't want the friends to be putting money into restricted. Um, fund balance account that's, that then doesn't get used for it, right?
No shame.
So, the wheel just keeps spinning around. Um, I would like to see, definitely like to see the coffee machine, if, if I know that you're investigating how we could possibly do that. And I love the interactive percussion.
Yeah.
And, and just to give you some explanation of why it looks the way it does under new ideas, um. What's happened with, um, in working with Joe and with, with the auditors, like the first, so the first year we had this, everything was, you know. Out of nine eighty and. And then the audit, you'll, you saw on the audit that they kind of made that correction and put everything into a proper fund. Uh, and so this year, Joe and I have started, we made that, she's not talked to finance committee about this, about how certain things. Are going into certain fund. It's the thing I thought of one, again, when I showed them the twenty-twenty-six budget to show that the budget narrative will explain. Um, like sometimes there's an increase in a fund for the share and it'll say, okay, that's because. These said items are coming from the friends' wish list money, so that money is gonna go directly into each of those funds. So I was been very specific about, it, like, yard science is gonna come out of a certain fund. Um, the coolers, the theater workshop, all these things come out of certain funds on our budget, um. If there's something like the coffee machine where I've seen a very wide range in price on that.
Oh, I'm sure.
And I've kind of said, well, okay, I need to, I, I need to investigate that. If I put it under new ideas or like the interactive percussion instruments, that's a conversation I wanted to have with you all and also with the. Friends exec board, you know, what are their thoughts on that before I just slap it on there, so. The new ideas is, is nine eighty, so then when I budget, as I show, as I showed finance committee. New ideas would be eighteen thousand, and that's where I could say, oh, you know what, great news, that coffee machine is fabulous and it's gonna work out. There we go, and then I can move that, we can make a budget amendment, like in December, you're gonna see a whole bunch of budget amendments. For the changes from the twenty-twenty-five wish list, so I hope that kind of explains it, um. A little bit better.
Okay.
So is there anything else I, I can add, um, so I would like to take this, uh, now that you have seen it to friends exec board in early October. So that it can debut at the annual meeting.
Um, the only other thing that I was thinking about and I didn't put a lot of thought around it was, um, more, um. I can't think of the word I wanna use. Like, we're gonna do this mascot, right? And we have the new tee, we have the new shirts, new logo shirts, is there other things that we can do, like you gave me a, um. Or maybe it was somebody at the friends of the library gave me a sticker, but those stickers don't work, I thought they were gonna be a card decal.
It is card decal.
They, you have to put them on the inside?
You do have to put them on.
And you can't see, and you, and you, and you can't see them.
Through a tinfoil window.
Through a tinfoil, I, I tried, I tried on every window and, and none of them, you can see through it, and I thought, okay. Maybe we need to have a real card decal that goes on the outside.
One that goes on the outside, yeah, and you know, when I went to put mine on, I was like.
Yeah, I thought, okay, these are great, you know, if you wanna put it on a laptop or you wanna put it on a, you know, a, a, a drink cup or whatever, but I thought. Oh, this doesn't work, right?
She'd let them see those for as printed the other way.
Yeah, so, right, so, which are gonna be more expensive, right? Um, but, but different logo things like that, uh, really? And then the other thing was, you know, I know this is, like, okay, your bag, amazing.
I would even like, probably purchase that.
I would. Oh, we used, years ago, we had bags that we, you could purchase at the, oh. It was the friends at the old building, we had some really, really nice bags at the old building, I still have one. Um, we don't sell those bags anymore, but those bags, if the friends bought some, and bought a, you know, like a case of those bags or. I don't know, you know, created those bags, those would sell.
Okay, here, so I'll just, I'm just gonna, I'm just, don't shoot the messenger.
Okay.
Bags have come up.
Okay.
And there's not. And maybe they can correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding of friends exec board was they were not really interested in the bags, but.
Really?
I, I can bring it up again.
Thank you. A lot of them sitting in the back for a long time.
But, okay, those are, those are, those are a total step up. That's.
Clearance, um, it was.
Okay, alright. Okay, because those bags are completely different than the, the other bags were just a cloth bookbag. Those, those are sharp. So those are the kind of, you know, like, marketing things that I'm thinking, you know, could we, um. Because like, I remember last year thinking, oh, it'd be really nice, um, to have, like, even, um. Rich was still on the board and I was talking about having the, um, license plate with the, with our reading logo on the bottom of it. You know, so, something that, you know, if it's, if it's funded by the, um, friends and, you know, we bought, I don't know, a case of those. And, um, and had those made up, cause I thought, is that something we can make in the idea lab? You know, so I was trying to think about, you know, can we make that in the rapid prototyping machine, right? Um, but I thought, even if we sell them at, um, cost or below cost, you know, just, just to really, especially as we're going into a millage. Just to get our, and our, our, um, logo out there as much as possible.
So, you, so I guess I saw, I'm writing these down, but you would also, uh, like to see. More of the swag, like.
Yes, yeah, that's the right word for it, just more swag, um, like, um. Like, like you're wearing a, you're, yes, and you're wearing a lanyard that says minions on it, right?
Yeah.
Um, be nice to have nice, um, lanyards, be really nice to have nice lanyards.
I can tell you, uh, Heather, when she was at the, uh, fire department, the pens were extremely popular.
Oh.
Extremely popular.
Oh, mine are gone, you gave me two, I, people to come from.
Yeah, they loved them and they loved.
They're like, hey, this is a nice pen, thank you, and literally took it from me, so, yes, and, right, so swag, yes, yeah, thank you. Okay.
Like, I don't know that I can make a motion, but can I make a suggestion about giving the stats? Once we're gonna have the full, we'll have the full readout and then next meeting.
True. The, the primary survey results, because they were, they were interesting.
Yeah, we would probably already work.
And that's like, yeah, I know William and I are working on, um, on some other digital ways to show you the stats and, uh, kind of do a better breakdown.
Okay.
Only thing I'll say, just to, I did provide you some of the responses in there and, um, but yeah, that's, I will.
Well, some of the responses were wild.
Yeah, yeah. I must have me that out of all of them, there was, you know, really only two that were. My triggers.
I mean, two out of a hundred and twenty-seven, I would take it.
I'll take it.
Yeah.
For sure, I mean, I mean, that's a really good point, right, we're talking, you know.
Yeah, it's one point four percent.
Right, right.
You can throw them into any category you want at that point, it doesn't, it's not gonna change anything.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
Motion adjourned.
But you're in the meeting at eight thirty-one.
Do you vote?